Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the June 27, 2024 Regular Board Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township and to welcome all of you who have joined us here in the Oakmont Administration Building. The meeting is being broadcast on the district's YouTube stream and will be available for later viewing by recording. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now, members of our board will read the district's mission and goals.
The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens.
The 2020 to 2025 district goals are social and emotional wellness, to produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish, prepare contemporary citizens, modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society. Diversity and inclusion, establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops socio-cultural proficiency.
Thank you. And now, I'll ask our Board Secretary, Mr. Anthony Testa, to please call the roll.
Yes. Dr. King?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Dr. Shelton?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Weedman?
Here. Ms. King had a personal conflict tonight. The next item of the agenda is the official minutes. I will welcome a motion to approve the official minutes from the June 13, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Larson moved.
McKay second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. And now, we'll turn it over to Dr. Ruchi for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Weedman. Yes, it is June 27, and our schools are not populated with students and teachers at this time. However, we have a group of students here with us this evening. We're delighted to hear from them. They are the Leafy Lunch League, and they're going to talk with us about some great work that they have accomplished at Cooper Town. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mastrocola, the principal at Cooper Town, to introduce the group.
Do you mind if I speak first?
Welcome. I'm back. I was just here last week. Many of you know, I'm the proud, proud principal of Cooper Town Elementary School. My name is Beth Mastrocola. But there's no moment I'm more proud of than when I have an ambitious, creative, hard-working group of students that come to me with fabulous ideas. I can take absolutely no credit for what they're about to present to you, except for the fact that I said yes, and I got out of their way. And it wasn't just them. It's also thanks to many of the parents that are here tonight that facilitated this and gave them the support, and also to Dr. Ruchi that said yes to me first. So, thank you, Dr. Ruchi. I'm going to let them take it away.
My name is Nora, and I was a fifth grader this past year. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to tell you about two of the environmental initiatives we launched at Cooper Town this year. This year at Cooper Town, we created a new student group and named ourselves the Leafy Lunch League with the goals of making our school more eco-friendly and eco-proactive, learning and teaching others about how to help our planet, creating student leaders, and building community. The new PTO Environmental Committee helped us to get composting started at Cooper Town. Our PTO paid for the supplies needed and for mother compost to collect our food scraps once a week and take them to Lynn Villa to be composted. We used five-gallon bins to collect the food scraps in the cafeteria and 64-gallon bins with straps to securely store the food waste outside by the dumpsters.
My name is Katie, and I was a fourth grader this past year. We made a compost table out of an old desk and made signs to tell kids what they could compost. Here are some examples of our composting signs. We composted all kinds of food, except for drinks. All non-food items needed to go in the trash.
My name is Elliot, and I was a fifth grader this past year. For the share table program, we made signs for the share table cart and found cooler ice packs and fridges in the building that we could use to store the uneaten food. As you can see in these example signs, the share table was for unopened food and drinks and whole fruit and peel. We learned which fruits were perishable and made sure that they all stayed cold so other people could eat them later.
My name is Samantha, and I was a fifth grader this past year. We worked with the head custodian, Mr. Mike, to figure out a system to take off the compost after lunch, replace bin liners, and make sure the 64-gallon bins got picked up each week. We also helped keep things clean and sanitary, answer kids' questions, and troubleshoot. Here's our lunchtime routine. First, kids put unopened untouched food or whole fruit on the share table with perishable items in the cooler. Next, they put food scraps in the compost. And finally, they put everything else in the trash. The share table program was for all students and staff, for leftovers from breakfast, lunch, or snack. Composting was only during fourth and fifth grade lunches time, lunchtime at first, but we expanded to include second and third lunch periods.
My name is Jules, and I was a fourth grader this past year. For our share table program, kids and staff put foods in the cooler, on the cart, or in share table bins inside certain fridges. Anybody could take share table food if they were hungry. Three times a week, parent volunteers collected leftover food and delivered it to two different food pantries. To teach everyone the new system, we made slide decks that fourth and fifth grade Leafy Lunch League students presented to all the homerooms. As issues arose and our systems evolved, we also presented reminders and updates at morning meetings. We are sharing with you copies of the three slide decks we used. We will now be passing out QR codes.
Hello, I'm Mac Trifson Manzo, and I was a fourth grader this past year. To make sure that kids were using the new system correctly, were required in training lunchtime helpers. Compost monitors made sure only food scraps went in the compost bins. And fifth graders took out the compost at the end of lunch and re-lined the bins. Share table sorters made sure that the perishable foods were in the cooler and composted. Things that shouldn't be on the share table, fifth grade fridge runners took the perishable food, share table food, to the fridge and swapped out the ice packs in the cooler. Each lunch period, there would be two compost monitors, one share table monitor, and for fifth grade, two fridge runners. Out of the approximately 100 kids per grade at Cooper Town were recruited. Sorry. Six to 10 lunchtime helpers made a schedule and got a student team leader to help make sure everyone did their jobs. What we accomplished, composting, we composted 3,564 pounds of food waste over 17 weeks with an average of 29 pounds per week. Share table roughly around 1,000 pounds of food delivered to the local food pantries over 17 weeks. The food scraps were composted and weighed as much as an adult female African elephant. In 17 weeks, from February to June, we composted over 3,500 pounds of food scraps, and the estimate that we delivered was 1,000 pounds of food. The local food pantries, the food scraps were composted, weighed as much as an adult female African elephant. If we compost the whole school year, our food scraps might weigh as much as three elephants.
My name is Caroline, and I was a fifth grader this past year. We learned a lot this year through our environmental projects at Cooper Town. We found that kids teaching their peers really works, and kids learned new systems very quickly. They are easy to teach. By the end of the year, more than 45 kids had joined our group. They were excited to join because it gave them a job and they wanted to help lead efforts to save the planet. Collecting food scraps for composting and untouched food at the share table made us realize there is a lot of food waste in our schools that can be delivered away from landfills and burn piles. Everyone in a school community can make a difference. There is always a way to help. We included the financials for you to review because although our very generous PTO paid for supplies, set up costs and mother compost service for this four-month pilot project, we do not know if this is a cost they can sustain. We are hoping that hearing about all of the great benefits of this program, the district will consider financing this initiative for years to come. Thank you for your consideration. We have a lot of people to thank, including Mr. Mike, Ms. Mastrocola, and other staff, parents, kid volunteers, and our community partners. Thank you for listening.
They're ready for questions, if you have any.
I'm just wondering, first of all, this is a great program. Thank you guys very much. I'm thrilled that we're doing this. I'd love to see this continue, I think, for a full year at Cooper Town. I'm also wondering if we could expand it to some other schools. Have other principals been informed of this? Have they kind of like been given the lowdown of how to get things done?
We've had some members of other environmental clubs at different schools come and visit our system. So, we'll see if they're ready to start up.
In our district, Haverford?
Yes, in our district.
Okay. I mean, I know, like, just for example, I'm thinking high school and middle school, if you're going to produce an elephant in four months, they could probably produce a herd of elephants in a few months. So, no, I love that idea. And the cost here you put in here, I'm looking at it, was the, I guess the total cost is $3,000, $4,000, give or take over the course of four months?
Yes. Well, it's not four months. The cost that's in the, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The cost that you saw in the slide was for the cost for the whole year, not for four months.
Oh, okay.
September to June, 2024 to 2025, estimated is $2,350.
Okay. I was trying to read it out of the listening.
You see, the total cost for the four-month pilot in 2024 was $1,161, but underneath that, you could see $2,350 is the estimated cost for a full year.
Exactly. Okay. All right. Thanks so much.
Any other comments or questions?
I just have a comment. That was the best presentation, not just because it's summertime, but because you guys did such a good job demonstrating your work, showing us the value of your work, and then telling us how you enlisted your friends and your fellow students. So, well done. Well done.
I just want to say I'm so impressed with the mic as well. I'm so impressed by the network that you all created, and you can see, you know, when the community really comes together. I mean, the cost is one thing, but I mean, you guys really put in the time and the effort to do this, and you should just be really proud of yourselves that you came up with this and put the plan together and expanded it when it had time to expand. And, you know, it just sounds like such a student-led group. That is very impressive. So, thank you so much for sharing this with us.
I assume many of you are moving up to middle school, so I hope that there's been some great opportunities to train some of the younger students to take your spots and maybe to start to investigate what can happen at the middle school.
Yeah. In fact, we have some junior members of the Leafy Lunch League here watching.
Grow them early. When I had kids at Chestnut Wald years ago now, they've both graduated from Haverford High School. I helped with the Roots and Shoots program, and one of the things that we explored was composting. And at that time, there wasn't a commonly-available service to come and pick it up, so the concerns were like, we would gather the food in the compost bins, and then they would just camp out somewhere on their school property. And there were concerns about what little rodents or whatever it would attract. And so, it was like, ixnay on the composting. We can't have that co-mingling of little critters and kids on the school grounds. So, it's nice to see that both, the idea continues and you've been able to marshal the energy to get it going and that our community has more resources to help make it happen. And I'll also say that as someone who looks at a budget for my professional job, I saw that you added the cost. I am curious if there's some savings that the district or the township recognizes because there's not as much trash to carry. So, you might have some offset there that even brings that cost down into something that's even a more manageable number. But thank you for sharing the good work that you're doing and glad to see that your program had such an impact. Like, telling us it was an elephant-sized impact is impressive.
I just finally want to say thank you to all the adults that I know were very much involved in this as well, in the PTO for funding it. What a great program.
I just wanted to thank you all for the amazing presentation. You all were wonderful. I know it can be scary to get up in front of a board in a room of adults and present, but you all did fabulous. Also, at the beginning of every one of our meetings, we read the district mission and goals, and tonight, I think we saw a prime example of our district goals in action. I'm looking at our "prepare contemporary citizens," and in that, we're modernizing and expanding learning experiences to prepare students, you and your classmates, as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers. And I saw all of that in this presentation. So, kudos to all of you. Thank you so much. And I have to know, as a graphic design junkie, who made your slideshows and your posters? Your posters are beautiful!
You want to answer, Nora? Come on up. Maybe you should.
It was Ms. Anita Kra, or I don't know her last name, but, and her daughter, Tessa Kra, I believe, who put this together and made the posters.
Well, I actually have her number, so I'm going to reach out and send her my kudos. No, but everything. Just fabulous. Thank you.
Is it okay?
Yes. It is okay. Yes. Get back to your summer. In fact, I'm ready for us just to be done. This is the best part of the meeting, right?
What a treat to have students here at the end of June. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. The second item within the superintendent's report portion of the agenda is a discussion about the solar at Chatham Park. At the last meeting, we awarded the bids for Chatham Park, and there were two options to put a solar array on the roof at Chatham. We gave time for the board to submit some questions, and this evening, we have Melissa Hughes here from PFM Financial Management, the board's financial advisors. And Melissa is going to talk a little bit about the financing of that and the recommendation that because of the cost associated with it, that we actually look at utilizing general funds from the district's general fund to cover that cost.
I'll just pass that hand out here in a minute, and I have to say, it's such a hard presentation to follow. Most fourth and fifth graders could give a lot of folks in public school the most.
There we go. So, so happy to be in front of the district today. And I'm going to back up a minute and talk about the district's big-picture financing plan, because that really is at the root of kind of the discussion about potentially paying cash for this portion of the project. And then, I'll go into kind of why we think that makes sense. And it's related really to the size of the solar relative to the size of the total project, and then the mechanism by which you get money back from the federal government as part of the IRA incentives for solar. So, I'm going to talk briefly through this handout, and I'm going to skip right on to page number five. We're going to start at the end and work backwards. So, as you may recall, the district has already financed roughly $15 million for this project. We sold bonds on April 18, and the money appeared in your construction fund on May the 23rd. At the same time, we did a little refinancing for some debt service savings, saved about $240,000 on that. And that's what you see in the blue and the yellow. That's for the first component of the financing for this project. Now, the total project is in excess of that amount. It's going to be close to $30 million in total. So, you're going to do another $15 million borrowing in calendar year 2025, because as you may recall, the IRS gives incentives, the small issuer exception, to breaking your financing down into $15 million increments. We have the $10 million BQ, and we have the $15 million small issuer exception. So, we're trying to take advantage of that. And you'll notice in the red, this is an estimate of $15 million financing in roughly March of next year. We'll have conversations with Tony and Dr. Ruchi about what the appropriate timing of that is. We will show it a little bit earlier, and you can slide it back in here if that's too early. But that gives you a sense of roughly what we're thinking in terms of that. So, why does this matter in terms of when we're thinking about solar? So, as part of the 2022 IRA, the federal government gave the same incentives to public entities like yourselves that they had allowed private developers to have for a period of time. And then, everybody got better incentives. But you could access them on your own. And that incentive can come in one of two forms. It can come as a payment stream over 10 years, or it can come as a lump sum. Most school entities or township entities, basically anybody who's not a full-time utility generator with very large amount of solar panels, picks the upfront option. Okay? So, that means, let's pretend like the amount that your solar panel is, is $450,000 for talking points. You'll pay out $450,000, and then, when your solar goes into service, you submit to the federal government and say, hey, we did the solar thing. Give me my money. And then, it takes about nine months to get your money. Okay? After it's placed into service. So, it's a couple years down the road. Okay? And that rebate will be at least 30%, but it can be adjusted for incentives if you check some additional boxes. But baseline is basically 30% of the total cost. Now, if we include that project cost, that component of the project cost in the financing, because you know in advance you expect to get money back, we have to include a special provision to allow for that in the context of the bonds. Okay? And the tool that we would need to use for tax purposes would be called an ERP, an extraordinary redemption provision. Okay? And it's a really good tool to provide flexibility when you know you're going to be receiving monies back. monies back. However, investors expect something in exchange for that. It's not free. So you pay slightly higher interest rates on the entire transaction. Because we know either of the amounts that you're thinking about are fairly small relative to the total transaction, you're going to, you would pay more in interest costs on $15 million to be able to finance what is a relatively small amount. Okay? So our thought is, pay cash for that piece. And again, our advice about this is driven by this relatively small size relative to the relatively large amount of debt. You know, 450,000 maybe, depending on which option you pick, compared to 15 million. Okay? Driving that higher interest rate. You also wouldn't pay interest on, on that component then. You know, the trade-off is you're giving up some fund balance for it. We think that, that the economics of that are good. And then finally, if you were to finance that component of a project with tax-exempt financing, the IRS says you don't get to double dip. So they haircut the amount of reimbursement you can get back. So kind of all those things, none of them are huge dollar amounts on their own, but they add up to being some, some considerations that go in the, you know, maybe you should think about doing a one-time use of funds for this. And we want to be clear that some of that advice is very much related to the size. If you came to us and said, we have an $8 million solar project relative to a $15 million borrowing, that math would be very different. Right? And we'd say, let's finance it, let's work through the mechanics, because your fund balance is a precious and limited commodity. Right? So as you work through your next steps of future potential projects that you might do, two, three, four, five years down the road, if you include solar in those, we'll have a conversation, just like we're having here today, about how does it weigh compared to all the other factors at play? Does anyone have any questions? That was a lot all at once, very technical.
No, but you did a really good job. I followed it all. So thank you.
That's good. It's, it's basically like, let's try to do the mathematically optimal thing. And it's, it's a little bit contrary to what we often say, which is preserve that cash, preserve that cash. Right? That's, that's generally sage advice.
Has there been any effort either on your part or on the part of the district to quantify the opportunity cost that we're losing by spending cash?
Sure. So let, let's talk a little bit about some illustrative numbers. Okay? So if you spend your cash, right, you're giving up, I'm assuming, Tony, that you're investing at about five right now. So you're giving up a 5% interest rate. Okay? You're also foregoing borrowing at about 4.25. Okay? So the opportunity cost is that delta, that 0.75% delta.
For what we would make on it? But I guess my point was more that we wouldn't have the cash to spend on something else.
You wouldn't have the cash to spend on something else. Yep.
So I was wondering if there's any sort of analysis done on, on that?
So really?
Obviously, we have a fund balance for a reason. And so just thinking about, you know, using it on this means we can't use it for something else. I appreciate the point, the, you say 0.5%?
0.75.
0.75%? Okay, that's, that's also helpful.
Yeah.
So truly, where you would source your funds from is your committed fund balance. So funds that were, you had in excess of revenue over expenses in a given year and voted to move those excess funds over to that committed fund balance for projects like this. So annually, JR will come to the committee with a list of projects that he recommends that we work on over the summer. Some of your common projects are concrete, if we're replacing doors for security reasons, those type of items, in addition to items that correlate to our facility study, items that have been recommended over the next, you know, three, five, 10 years. So some of those projects then would get bumped in order to, to source the funds for this project. So it would be a decision of, okay, well, what don't we do this year and we push off to the next year? So you're kind of moving out that timeline that he had set up as far as what projects you would do within the immediate future.
Or the other alternative would be if those projects have a reasonably long useful life, including those in a future borrowing instead of this. Right? That would be not a decision for today, but a decision we could have at a future time.
If it was like some sort of larger project?
Yeah.
Of this scale?
Yeah.
And is this, is this generally the time that the district thinks about using the fund balance and what's in it, sort of assesses what we have in our fund balance and what we want to do with it?
Yeah, I think this would be an appropriate time to do that. We've already approved what we're going to do this summer. So if you did this now, that would kind of then put that in, in your mind, say, okay, well, we're doing this now, what will we not do going forward? Kind of, would give us, you know, a chance to look at that ahead of time.
Yeah, because, because you're right. And that was kind of one of my earlier points. Your fund balance is a finite resource. So it does have to be some prioritization of kind of what do you spend and what don't you spend and how do you make it all fit together? And there's many good combinations. Right? And that, that's the hard decision that you all have.
What is our available fund balance right now?
So your committed fund balance right now is a little over eight and a half million. Then if you take away what we're doing in summer capital projects this year of 1.9, you're down to a little under 6.7 million. And again, that's funded by, you know, when we have years where there's excess reserves or, you know, if you're going to move over any, any money into that account.
And this year, I guess we'll know how much, if we have excess reserves this year? Do we, I mean, June, it's not quite June 30th yet? We'll, we'll hear how much we're, you know, what the, and what, I mean, what it looks like?
Yeah, I'd say probably closer into the month of July, we would have a better handle on what is still coming in to be recorded for the 23, 24 fiscal year.
Okay, great.
And this isn't something you have to make a final decision on today. Ultimately, we need a final decision, I guess, at the end of the day when we do the next financing. But wanted to have this conversation now, as you're making decisions about the project itself. Right? You've just awarded the bids, and as you'll start to spend money likely this fall. Right?
So you're saying the decision with, whether we go with cash or financing, that would be one that we would?
We could make that later, assuming you put a reimbursement resolution in place. Yeah.
I thought it'd be important also to point out that the investment, we are investing in something that's going to return money to the district at about a 5% rate. So whether we invest in a bank account or we invest in a solar array, which we get, you know, the energy cost back.
Right. And, and this doesn't include any of that. This is just a, you know, our kind of analysis and recommendation doesn't factor that benefit in, because, because that dollar amount is unknown until you turn it on and see where, where the comparable energy rates are at the time when you're starting to offset them.
So it doesn't include the energy savings or the SRECs, SRECs which could be sold on?
Yep, if you had, if you had enough of those to, to make a difference. Yep.
Mr. Testa, can you remind us, so when we're looking at the budget, I believe there's a certain percentage of the budget that is allowed to be fund balanced, and then also for auditing purposes, we don't really want to dip below a certain percentage. What would this, what impact would that have in terms of our acceptable percentage range of the fund balance?
So because we have money in a committed fund balance, that's not part of what PDE gives you limitations on? It's your unreserved fund balance, which we cannot exceed 8% if we're going to increase taxes in a given year. So truly, you have that to work with. But it's just something to keep in mind, because it's something that you fund your capital projects with every year. And are you replenishing that as we go along? You know, is that planned to replenish?
Sure. Thank you.
Right. It's, it's have the conversation now so that you can be strategic about your decisions over the course of the next six months or so, and understand that this is, I think, not a material component of those, of those kind of smaller capital project decisions.
Melissa, when you talk about a return on the project, is it more of a return or is it a cost avoidance? I think, is it, is there a distinction?
There is. I would describe the energy that Mr. Shelton described and the SRECs as a, as primarily cost avoidance. Right? Because you're, you're still going to have some cost, and you're going to have the upfront cost. Right? You're going to choose to do, to, to do this component of the project as an upfront cost and not pay it over time, like we do for many things. And like we frankly might do for future solar projects if they exist. Again, it's relative, it's the size of the solar project relative to the size of the whole project.
And so we did get a model that was prepared by Raymond James, and it shows for the larger project using cash?
Yeah.
A total cost of 640, $639,000 with $155,000 credit that comes in.
And that's what we're talking about.
Right. And is it correct to say with the cost avoidance and credits and things that the net payoff to break even is 23 years?
I haven't seen that exact analysis, but that tastes right to me, if that's what you're, like, I, I buy that.
Okay.
It, it is a long-term investment in order to break even, generally speaking, on solar panels. So what you're committing to in general is to keeping the solar panels, to keeping them maintained, to, you know, at year 15, you're going to need to replace a major part likely doing that.
I just have one more question for Mr. Testa. Is the, I think it's on. Can you hear me, Anna? That, the committed fund balance, like if something, if a generator broke and needed to be replaced, would it come from that? Something like that, like a large project that we aren't, not anticipating? Is that where it comes from?
It would. Yeah, if you had a boiler that failed or a roof that failed, yeah, that would come from that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all. And good luck.
Thank you so much.
Good luck with getting the project underway. All of the projects, not just the solar. Very exciting.
Thanks for coming out tonight, Melissa. Next item on our agenda is an overview of the technology audit that was, that was conducted. Mr. Anderson, if you want to get us started with that.
Good evening. I'm happy to introduce Demetrius Roberts, Kristin Powell, and Josh Ecker from the Chester County Intermediate Unit. They're going to present, walk us through the study that they did for us of our instructional technology in the district, walking us through the process that they undertook in the district, how they gathered information from our families, students, and staff. They'll then go into some of the findings and recommendations that came out of that study that they did. And then at the end, I'll come back up and get into a little bit of what we've started in the district already with the findings that they shared.
Thank you, Rob, for the introduction. Thank you all for your time tonight to discuss the results of our instructional technology audit. We are from Chester County Intermediate Unit. And to briefly introduce ourselves, my name is Josh Ecker. I'm the Learning Design Coordinator at Chester County IU. I'm joined by Dr. Demetrius Roberts, who has been supporting us with this work internally throughout the entire process and is continuing to support us here tonight.
And hi, I'm Kristin Powell. I'm a training consultant specialist at Chester County Intermediate Unit, and I work with assistive technology.
So tonight, we'd like to go through some different components of this project. First, the development and structure, the findings, the recommendations, and then we will have time for Q and A. With that said, if the board has any clarifying questions throughout, please feel free to ask those as we're going. So this project really started in the fall of 2023, when the district identified a need and desire to conduct an instructional technology audit that would involve data collection and analysis, and identification of any gaps in technology use, and then recommendations that the IU would provide in the report. I will add that although we focused on the gaps, and that's what you'll see mainly throughout the report, there are a lot of strengths within the district. That's just not what we focused on. Key areas for this report include alignment with the mission and the vision and the goals of the district, staffing and personnel, curriculum, instruction, and assistive technology. The project was conducted over five phases, starting with initial project planning, instrument development and review, followed by data collection, analysis, and finally, the writing of the The research design was mixed methods. You can see here that we had both quantitative and qualitative data strands. Within each of those boxes, you can see the specific data points we collected, including surveys, focus groups, classroom visits. We then took all of that data and analyzed it by data strand, and then combined those to identify how the data was aligned or potentially was saying different things. And that gave us a more nuanced understanding of instructional technology in the district. All right, now we'll jump right into findings. There is a lot to cover, so we will go through relatively quickly, but we're happy to, at the end, dig deeper into anything you would like to discuss. So in the area of staffing and personnel, a few of our key findings were that there are currently a wide variety of roles who are involved in instructional technology. There is some ambiguity about different responsibilities around instructional technology and who may be responsible for specific aspects of it. There's also a perception of some limited opportunities for professional development around instructional technology due to limited time, which is natural in any district, and competing initiatives and priorities. As far as the current technology curriculum, there are currently opportunities for students in grades K through 12 to learn about and develop their technology skills. The approach to that and the degree of implementation does differ, differ across grade band and across building. There is currently, and I think Rob will speak to this a little bit soon, there is currently a K-12 scope and sequence being developed for technology learning in the district, which should help with implementation throughout the entire district. Findings regarding current technology use and perceptions, there were some emergent patterns here. One is that really all stakeholder groups we spoke with agreed that there is significant importance in learning about technology skills for students. There was also identification of a supportive administrative team who is willing to do whatever they can to support instructional technology in the district for both students and teachers. There were also some identified challenges. One is inconsistent use of instructional technology, as well as concerns about screen time and cell phone use. This, I know will be very hard to see what is actually written on there, so I will just give a brief summary of what is there. This is data from the teacher questionnaire. So this is all of the survey items they responded to. If you, again, I know it's hard to see the text, but looking at the bars themselves, the green and blue colors indicate the percent of responses that were in agreement with that statement. The yellow and red were disagree or strongly disagree. So overall, looking at this data, what you'll see is that the vast majority of teachers, over 80%, use technology on a very regular basis in both their planning and their instruction. Many teachers also teach students about appropriate use in their classroom. And about 2/3 of teachers feel confident in both their ability to teach students about new technology and to keep up with new technology trends themselves. What you'll see the second or the third and fourth bar in, about a quarter of classrooms give students an opportunity to learn about or use new technology on a monthly basis. And then we have a few here about assistive technology that Kristin will explain.
Sure. So the last three bars, you'll see some information around how assistive technology and accessible technology is utilized in the classroom. And I just wanted to clarify, as you read through the report, you'll see the words assistive and accessible technology. And assistive technology is when a student with an IEP needs a one-to-one device that's labeled as assistive technology. Accessible technology could also be in a student's IEP as assistive technology, but typically when we talk But typically, when we talk about accessible technology, it's the stuff that's already in in a student's Chromebook or in a smartboard such as text to speech and dictation. So the final three questions that were about average of about fifty percent, the first one being is do students have access to accessible technology features in the classroom? Do students with assistive technology use it in the classroom? And then do students have opportunities to learn about accessible features on their Chromebooks?
Oh, thank you. So this graphic is the data from the family questionnaire, so you can see the five items that were asked on there. We divided this data by elementary and secondary to see if there were any differences across those groups. What you'll see is that generally, both elementary and secondary were, you know, aligned with their responses. Both groups felt it was very important for children to be learning about technology and how to use it in school and feel that their child has sufficient opportunity to use technology in school. Results were similarly aligned for the third item. I have concerns about how much one to one Chromebook device time my student has, so that was just under half of respondents. And then we get to some wider differences between groups in the last two. So the second to last, I feel informed about how technology is used in my child's school. That was just over a third for elementary families and just about half for secondary. And then in the last item, the majority of families at both levels felt confident and comfortable using the technology they need to to engage with the school. That number did drop slightly for secondary, but they're both still relatively high. We also did want to break out the data on screen time and smartphone use. We know that is an important issue and topic of conversation within the district and beyond really throughout the country. So we wanted to show this by stakeholder group. What I'll say as a general statement is that really most groups were were mixed. You know, there was no sort of consensus within any single group. So from the family perspective, there are some concerns about over reliance and isolation that technology use can create, particularly one on one technology use, and they would appreciate additional data about their child's screen time. There were also mixed opinions on cellphone use. You know, there's the the benefits that come with it from just coordinating the logistics of pickups to, you know, in an emergency situation, the benefits there as well as educational potential as well. But then there's also the downsides. From the teacher perspective, again, varied perspectives, but there was general agreement that there is importance to using technology in the classroom in a way that is age appropriate. And they also noted the importance of both in school and at home monitoring of screen time to get a picture of the overall amount of technology use for students. From the counselor perspective, there was a concern about, you know, increases in anxiety from cellphone access. And they did acknowledge that there's definitely an amount of screen time that is fine and appropriate and helpful for learning. But, you know, don't want to, don't want that to be overdone and risk overuse. So they did suggest limiting screen time for noneducational activities to limit the the total. From the student perspective, they as well had mixed feelings. For the most part, the students we spoke to felt that technology use levels were appropriate, but they had varying preferences there. And they did, multiple students mentioned that they're becoming more aware of the the potential drawbacks of screen time, which could be a result of conversations at home or in the school building. From the administrative perspective, those who we spoke to did acknowledge and note the mixed feelings throughout the community about cellphone use and screen time as well. And their aim is really to to balance that, to identify how to best use technology to engage students in learning and to increase learning, but avoid that over reliance on technology. There is also some consideration of how the community can be educated about the potential drawbacks of social media and screen time. And finally, the IU project team, when we were doing our observations, we did not observe any widespread or systemic issues with screen time. There weren't any classrooms we walked into where students were on their one to one devices the whole time or even the majority of the time. With cellphone use, there was none observed at the elementary level. At the middle school level, there was some. It was a Friday, which I know the policy is slightly different on Fridays there. And then at the high school, there was a wide variance, both in the classrooms and in the hallways.
Okay, for the assistive technology piece, we found that the assistive tech is primarily used by our related service providers such as speech and language therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. That the gen ed teachers were also really interested in knowing more about the accessible features that were in their both their Chromebooks and in their smartboards. And especially as, you know, there's technology that's changing, so they might have been comfortable prior to using some accessible features, but with new devices and stuff coming in, they'd like to have some more training around that.
Another key finding was an emergent theme of communication challenges. So as noted previously, there is a desire to clarify some responsibilities around instructional technology integration. There were some teacher requests for additional communication and guidance around available technology tools. And families, again, requested additional details about student screen time and the overall student experience with regards to screen time and technology. As far as alignment with the district mission and goals, after reviewing the mission and goals, we determined that instructional technology is essential to achieving them. For example, modernizing the learning experience and providing career learning opportunities. And that also needs to be balanced with the potential challenge, potential downside of social emotional well being and how over reliance on technology can impact that as well. And now we'll jump straight into the recommendations. So what I want to do is just quickly take you through how these slides are formatted. So what you'll see at the top is kind of the recommendation category, in this case, personnel and staffing. Then we have below that the actual recommendation next to the number. Below that, we have some potential action items. I want to emphasize that those action items are not necessarily, in this case, the two next steps we believe are necessary for the district to take. There are some representative examples of next steps the district could take to achieve the overall recommendation. I won't go over the connection to the findings since we did discuss the findings already. And then the references and supplemental resources are there for your exploration after this presentation. So the first recommendation is to review and define instructional technology roles. Action items here could include defining support processes around different educational tools. So when an issue does arise, what is the the first step a teacher or student might take? Or if it's a district wide issue, what does that process look like? It could also include cross referencing the current roles that are involved in instructional technology against all of the known responsibilities around instructional technology and making sure all of those responsibilities are accounted for in those roles. Our second recommendation, also under personnel and staffing, is to reinforce collaborative processes across teams. So these do exist, but some ways to even bolster that further would be to develop scenario based processes. So considering what issues can arise with instructional technology and through those scenarios, develop different plans for how teams can collaborate to resolve them. Another action item would be to review existing frameworks for integrating technology leadership. So on this slide, I will actually point to the references at the bottom. Those are from the Consortium for School Networking, also known as COSIN, and they provide a lot of great resources around instructional technology leadership. Recommendation three is to increase learning opportunities on instructional technology. So one step here would be to define and standardize the competencies or the core skills that those in the district need around the tools that are used. So for example, Canvas and Google Workspace and identifying what do teachers or other stakeholders need to be able to do within those tools or platforms. Another action item would be to develop or provide self paced professional development sessions for a variety of stakeholders, and this would help potentially alleviate some of the time crunch that we know does exist in any school setting. Now looking at curriculum, recommendation number four is to expand the current digital literacy curriculum. And again, as noted, there is currently a K twelve scope and sequence being developed. So next step would be to implement that scope and sequence. And another action item would be to identify ways to use technology to really transform the student learning experience. Recommendation five is to utilize tools to support curriculum change. So this could be structuring and organizing class link by grade level and subject. That was something that teachers mentioned. They really do like class link and the ability to find the available tools in that system. But they noted it would be helpful if they had a more narrowed focus for them to jump into and see what might apply to their subject area or their grade level. Another action item here would be to review current tools and see if there's any redundancy in what they can do to see if any can be eliminated and simplify, again, the choice for teachers when they're looking for instructional technology tools. And jumping into instruction, our sixth recommendation is to align instructional practices with effective technology integration frameworks. So an example we provided in the action items is the value add of technology on teaching. So this is a framework that could be applied when developing lessons or developing units of study to ensure that technology, again, is transforming the learning experience in a positive way. Another action item would be to collaborate as a community to formalize a stance on one to one device screen time. There is, you know, if you look down at the references here, and there are plenty of other references out there that speak about screen time and the potential benefits or drawbacks. There is not really any specific guidance about number of hours that are appropriate for school aged children. That is something that maybe at some point will exist. But at this point, it is really a matter of ensuring technology is helping achieve the district goals without causing any undue social emotional harm. So that's our second action item there. Recommendation number seven is to communicate instructional expectations to students and families to build on those existing practices, and that could include digital portfolios that follow students across all grade levels and highlight both their accomplishments and how technology has been infused into the learning process, as well as identifying additional modes of communication to engage with families about important information on instructional technology.
You'll see in the report that a lot of the assistive technology recommendations overlap with the ed tech ones. But a couple of ones that are specific to assistive technology are having teachers get training around accessible features. For example, Google certifications that are free or low cost to just, you know, making them, you know, more accessible to all teachers. And just providing opportunities for access for the students and the teachers themselves and learning that process.
Recommendation nine falls under the other category. So these were recommendations that came from what emerged in our audit. They weren't necessarily one of the key areas we were looking for. But the first recommendation in this category is to implement additional communication processes. Communication across a complex organization like a district is always a challenge, and the district does a great job with that. But here are some ways that that could potentially be improved. One would be to share regularly scheduled updates with teachers on new instructional technology. That same approach could be used with families as well. And then another action item would be potentially developing a district chatbot to help any visitors to the website locate the information they'd like to find. And that's a fairly new approach since generative AI is fairly new. That is something that some districts are currently working on or have just implemented. And last but not least, recommendation number ten is to consider infrastructure enhancements. So the infrastructure throughout the district was was strong overall. There were some particular areas where it could be augmented further. So for example, enhancing in school charging facilities for students who forget their charger or have any other issue like that, as well as providing updated guidelines on an annual basis around device management and web usage. So that is the end of our presentation. Thank you for listening to us talk for quite a while. We really did enjoy this work, so we thank the district for engaging in it with us and to everyone who participated in all of the data collection, whether you were in a family focus group or a teacher or student focus group or completed the survey. We appreciate all of your input and thoughts as well. So thank you again, and at this point, we're happy to answer any questions you have.
I'm not seeing as people are gathering questions. One I had is you mentioned in recommendation six, a framework called value add of technology on teaching. Can you just describe a little bit more what that is and and what, like how it's implemented, what that could point to in a teacher developing a lesson plan or?
Yeah, definitely. So there is, it's a relatively new framework developed by by Google and some nonprofit organizations. And it essentially is a fairly detailed rubric of different qualities of technology tools for teachers to consider when they're deciding what to use in their classrooms. So we, you know, at the IU, we've developed some simplified rubrics that teachers and administrators can use. But essentially, it would be whether it is an individual teacher or a team or even on the district level, it is using that rubric to really score the tool and determine if that's the the best tool for the job.
And in the rubric, does it include non-technology approaches to that same content or lesson?
It does not, but it does, through completing the rubric, force anyone using it to really consider, does this help me accomplish the goal? And if not, then the consideration would be are there analog, non-technology approaches to doing this as well?
Thank you.
I had a question also, actually, about the same recommendation to number six. You mentioned collaborating as an educational community to formalize stance on one to one device screen time, but that there aren't a lot of studies out there yet. Are there any resources that you would recommend using to kind of try to try to set that 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 time or get a kind of range of times there?
There, so there is some guidance you'll see for children five and younger. I'm not sure if that's because organizations are kind of avoiding the the potential messiness of providing recommendations for school aged children. But there's really, unfortunately, nothing more specific than don't overuse technology. Yeah, so what I would say is, you know, most of the guidance out there just says to be responsive to students' needs and understand the different needs of different students. But, you know, there's there's a need for instructional technology, obviously, to prepare students for modern life.
Sort of wonder, though, if the lack of guidance is reflective on the fact that, you know, maybe our teachers are already making good decisions on 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 their particular classroom. And so, you know, my hesitance towards the same sentence that Mr. Schwartz brought up was, do we want to have it the same everywhere? You know, I mean, like different kids are going to use it differently in different classes and and subjects. And since, you know, it kind of says to me, when there's no guidance, like maybe there's no answer, at least at this time. And so that's, I really appreciate the work that you that you did here and to find, you know, all of these these different things for us to think through. But I guess I would, you know, put it towards the district and implementing this, that maybe making it the same everywhere isn't the best thing. Something to think about.
Yeah, and I, you know, just to add on to your thought, there is, you know, the potential formal stance on one to one technology use wouldn't necessarily have to be consistent, you know, in terms of this amount of screen time is the right amount. You know, it could be a more more fluid stance as well.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you.
I had a question about assistive technology. First off, thank you so much for this very comprehensive report. Was any piece of what you looked at with the assistive technology, looking at our compliance with students' IEPs or, you know, how?
No, we didn't look in in that. What we wanted to do first What we wanted to do first is just see how assistive technology is being used, if there's any training that needs to be done with it. The information that we gleaned almost across the board was that they were comfortable with the assistive technology that they have. Even the gen ed teachers felt comfortable in using the assistive technology. I think if we found some gaps in people saying, gosh, I don't know what the student uses it, or I don't know how to use it, I don't know how to implement it into my curriculum in the gen ed, then we would make a recommendation of, let's take a deeper dive into what the IEP is saying. But since we really didn't glean any type of gaps in that, that we didn't look further than how it's being implemented and used.
Thank you again to echo everyone else. Thank you for all the work and your, all of your suggestions. I guess my comments, they don't really apply to the assistive technology piece or even technology use in our upper grades. But I'm a little disappointed in some of the recommendations as they pertain to technology use at the elementary level, because I think there's a plethora of negative consequences that come with giving our youngest learners a Chromebook, which is something, you know, pre-COVID, we did not do. I have two older sons. They got Chromebooks when they went to middle school at Haverford Middle School, and they they adapted fine. You do have to learn how to use technology. That's absolutely true. It's part of life. It's not going anywhere. They were fine doing that. There are, there's a lot of educational research, like I have two articles that I always carry around with me that are coming out now, the detriments with our youngest, I'm talking specifically elementary, the kids learn better on paper, not screens, that handwriting beats typing for learning and thinking. I've seen studies about how math is best done with paper and pencil. And they're doing all these studies now, and, you know, everyone went to screens, and we all get why. I understand that, too. We had COVID. But I think, you know, academically, increasing screen time doesn't increase increase learning. And I think, you know, we, studies are coming out, and this really concerns me, having a young child, you know, who is in front of a screen. And, I mean, we always had the American Academy of Pediatrics recommendation, no more than two hours of screens, and the amount of screen he's getting just at school, not even just coming home for some downtime. It's staggering. And then I also have the concern that something, I mean, our youngest learners, they have poor impulse control. We're talking eight, nine, 10-year-olds, you know, and they are smart and they know technology, I mean, my 10-year-old better than I do. They know how to get to do stuff that they shouldn't be doing. And I don't mean inappropriate stuff, but I mean, multiple times, I can tell you a Phillies' day game score that he told me because him and his friends were watching, something that, yes, I would let him do at home to watch it, but, you know, or games they played. And and he's pretty forthcoming, like, yeah, oh, well, it was boring. So, you know, we were, I'm like, if you gotta do that, poor impulse control. And, you know, he, and I know even more concerning, and at least that's, though, something that's not detrimental to his mental health. It's a Phillies game, you know, it's, but we just had a situation, parents informed me at Cooper Town at the end of the year, there was some very inappropriate content the third graders were accessing. And I know what you're saying here, that, yes, parental involvement, and yes, teaching, teacher instruction on appropriate use, that's all important. But again, these kids, that only goes, I mean, I'm not in school, I'm not standing next to him to be like, don't put on that Phillies game, like, you know, or don't look at his, your friend's screen with that. And, you know, kids do stuff, and teachers have 25 kids in a classroom. We're talking, again, elementary kids. And I just have a lot of concerns that these recommendations don't go far enough for our youngest learners.
Thank you for bringing that up. And, you know, this is exactly the conversation that is happening really across the country. You know, so it's certainly not unique to Haverford, but it's something that everyone is trying to figure out. I think that, you know, from from our observations, from the data we collected, we did see a lot of non-technology-related work happening, especially at the lower grades. So we did observe that that is sort of staggered, and it seems to grow in an appropriate way over time from our observations. But, you know, with that said, it's something that needs to be constantly monitored and having, you know, as a community coming together to formalize that stance might help serve as a frame to make individual decisions on different technology tools, different practices, and anything like that.
I just had a quick clarifying question. Sorry, I think it's on slide, the one about, let's see, family questionnaire responses and the findings? Right there. Can you just clarify how you're defining elementary and secondary, which grade bands those are?
Elementary is K-5. Secondary is 612.
Great, thank you.
I had just a really brief clarification, and it's, there's possibly I misheard, so I just wanted to check in. When you were talking about the differences between assisted technology and accessible technology, did I, did I hear that, like, one of the things that some of the teachers are feeling like they may, they need some extra help is, is understanding what accessible technology we already have access to, probably in particular for students who don't have an IEP but could benefit from that accessible technology?
Yes, absolutely. So things already in their Chromebooks, again, such as like dictation and text-to-speech are like two of the biggest features for accessible technology that's great for all students. And so there was an interest in that. They know that it's there, maybe a couple of kids on IEPs might use it, but a lot of them kind of felt that all students could benefit from those, learning those accessible features.
So that might be an area of training that we would want to look into?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, I don't see any other questions from the board at this time. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Anderson is going to talk about about some next steps, and as he's coming to the podium. As an administrative team, we were very impressed with the approach that was taken, Jeff, with your availability to us in terms of questions that were coming up throughout the process. Thank you.
Thank you. And first, obviously, I want to echo my same thanks that Dr. Ruscus just gave to the Chester County team. They were great to work with throughout the entire process with us. So what I was going to do is go through, we've, we've also only had the audit results for a couple of weeks, but we've already had some chances to kind of make some moves to start responding to some of the findings and recommendations. So just thought we'd go into some of those and then kind of what the plan moving forward looks like to address more of those recommendations. First, we have the retiring of Laurie Van Triest has us currently searching for a new technology integration coordinator. So along with that, we're going to kind of do a little bit of shift and prioritization of the responsibilities within that role, so that they focus primarily on the professional development and training for our teachers, what they need, working with the building principals, the other departments, just to make sure that we're providing whatever professional development those teachers need for our current tools and then new tools moving forward. They'll continue to kind of work with our instructional technology tools, making sure that they're integrated together, working with our other systems, and to some of those recommendations, making sure there's no overlap and things like that as we look at new tools. And then lastly, just as part of their responsibilities, they currently supervise our elementary building tech assistance, but the, the, the new technology integration coordinator will also work with our tech mentors that are, we have their teachers that work with their peers to kind of integrate technology in their classroom currently. This role, spend some more time with them, working at how we can best utilize them to help our teachers have everything, everything they need. One of the things that was kind of happening, we'll say in parallel to the audit this year, was the tech mentors were working on kind of developing a scope and sequence, so to speak, of instructional technology skills with, across the district. So we started with a baseline from ISTI, the, which is a national group, a national group that kind of puts out instructional technology standards for teachers and students. So they have a sample scope and sequence for students that we kind of started with. The tech mentors spoke with their colleagues and other teachers and other staff in their building to kind of figure out where our students were currently at different skills, where they kind of started to learn those skills, when they were getting more sound in those, and then when, you know, teachers found that they were very strong in those skills. This is just two of the 15 areas that are kind of encompassed within that whole scope and sequence that they worked on this year. The goal here is to kind of give all of our teachers an understanding of what skills they can anticipate a student have when they come into the classroom, as well as, you know, kind of teaching them what they do and don't need to kind of introduce to them if it's something that they already know. Our plan is to share this out with the teachers next year as we kind of build out how best to communicate all of this information to them. Also, for anyone who was here at the policy meeting last week, we talked about the AI working group. So with the the refinement to the policy 815 and the administrative regulation around AI, we're going to develop an AI working group that'll kind of look at AI, figure out how our teachers can use it, develop ways that we can then start to, at least at the secondary level to start, start using it with students after we've educated them on, you know, biases and the, you know, verifying the data and, you know, the goods and the bads of AI and everything like that, how we can then start maybe utilizing it with the students themselves. And then a bigger, longer-term goal there is to develop a technology planning committee. So that committee will take whatever of the findings and recommendations from CCIU that we couldn't kind of make moves on very quickly and help us to develop a long-term, you know, two- or three-year plan about how we'll address not only those findings and recommendations, but also more a long-term vision of instructional technology within Haverford. The plan will be to kind of mimic the curriculum review cycle that is currently in place for all of our subjects. So, for example, like this year, we're in the audit phase of that cycle. Next year, we'll do some planning and communicate that plan out, and then start to implement that through the next couple of years. And then in that last year, in 27, 28 school year, we'll kind of come back to that audit phase to see where we, we are compared to where we had planned to be at that time. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't mean to be like Debbie Downer with technology, but I just hope when I'm looking at the, you know, the keyboarding stuff at the, on the, I think it's slide number three. And, you know, I hope, and I've seen, just in my experience as a parent, that we're not focusing on keyboard to the detriment of handwriting. It's so important that these young kids are writing. You know, I've seen drop-offs in my own son when they went to more keyboarding, and I've seen a change in written reports, and now they're all typed. And, you know, fine motor skills are developing at the youngest ages, like second and third and fourth. And I just hope it's just used in, I, I just hope we're not replacing keyboarding with typing. Yes, they do have to learn, honestly, they probably are better at it without even any instruction than I am at this point at 47. So, but, I mean, I get it, you have to, like, you want to teach it, but I just caution, it just, you know, fine motor skills are really important, and then developing, it's another thing.
I'm just really glad to hear that we're taking such a well-rounded approach to auditing our processes, seeing what's working for us, checking in with our professionals. I love to see this so much, not only as the parent of a child who's dependent on technology for literal speech and everyday life, but also knowing that in these everyday classrooms, children will still have, other children will have access to this technology, and they'll know what they're looking at when my child is using dictation to text or, you know, or when she's meeting her, her PT and OT goals using typing in addition to still holding the pencil. Like, I'm really glad that as parents, we also have the opportunity to work with our own children in addition to working with, you know, the teachers and and having access to all this information. Because truly, the things that I do at home in five, 10, 15-minute increments supplement the things that the teachers are working really hard to do in the classroom. So I just appreciate the work. I appreciate the professionals from the IU and the well-rounded approach.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, we love the audit cycles. So glad to see you're adopting that approach. We know that there is so much rigor and thoroughness that goes into that and then the contributions of so many people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Ms. Weedman, I do have one announcement to make this evening in the, in the hopes of calming any level of stress that may be raised. On Monday morning, there will be tree trimmers at Chatham Park working on the cherry trees. The cherry trees are not being cut down. We've informed the township, we are informing everyone, but there will be some extensive tree work done there. The trees have been reviewed by an arborist, and it is at the advice of that arborist that the trees are going to be trimmed. There is also a large oak tree that is very unhealthy and is going to be removed along Glen Arbor, up by the corner of Al Boston. It's the smaller of the two large oak trees, but the, again, the arborist has confirmed that, the shade tree commission is aware. We just want to let everyone in the community know when they see that work taking place on Monday, the trees are remaining.
And Dr. Ruscus, am I correct in remembering that part of the process of the Chatham remodel will be to also additionally plant some, some other cherries at the end of the process?
Yes. My son will be thrilled. He was very worried about losing those, those trees, so that's good to hear.
That's, that's it.
Okay. Thank you for a robust superintendent's report for item three on our agenda, and it's a time for public comment on items pertaining to tonight's agenda. Nobody signed up in advance. Is this about an agenda item?
Well, it was about smart things. I don't know what that. I sent it out a couple days ago.
Yes, are you?
Dario.
Yes, you, we will have that at the second time to speak. Thank you. So I will move on to board reports. Item A is for the Delaware County Community College, and Latonya King is not here tonight. She will share a report when she is next at our meeting. The next one is the Delaware County Intermediate Unit.
No reports, since we haven't had an additional meeting since our last board meeting here. Just for information purposes, the next DCIU Board of Directors meeting will be held on Wednesday, August 7th, at 6:45 PM.
Thank you. For the Legislative Council?
No report.
Pennsylvania School Boards Association, Mr. Schwartz?
We're talking about an item later on this evening for, to submit to the put form proposal. And also, just as FYI, there's a safety summit coming up on August 13th. So, if there's any, in that, other than that, no report.
Okay. The Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, Mr. Schwartz?
Okay, and how do I go? And I apologize in advance, I don't have my notes I took with me at the report, because I grabbed a different bag this evening, but I will try to win it. At the last very full meeting that we had, the triple meeting in, in evening last week, at the Finance Facility Committee meeting itself, we, we, we had a bit of a discussion about the upcoming Cooper Town elementary design plans. Those are going to be coming up in, that's going to be designed this year. As you may be aware, we are, in addition to spending in Chatham, we also looking to spend in Cooper Town to get rid of some of the modulars that are there. That design phase is coming up this year and likely with a vote on the construction next, next spring at some point. We also had a fairly robust discussion about the sustainability resolution draft. We are, we are working on a sustainability audit, or I'm sorry, sustainability, we're audit now, it's stuck in my head, working on sustainability policy. And we are looking for a number of ways to make our district more sustainable. And in addition to that, we want to pass a resolution. So we had some discussion about some language for that resolution. This would be a little bit more than a standard resolution indicating what our, what our goals are. It actually would have some, 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 you know, action items associated with it. It wouldn't be, we wouldn't be approving any items, but, but it would lay out some, some pretty concrete things. So I think it would be a good, so we have to, I think we have discussed that a little bit, I believe that's going to be on a vote for later, a later meeting. And then just we have some informational items, just on athletic trainer agreement renewal, and had our, something which I was looking forward to, our revenue and expense report, one of our last ones, I guess, of the fiscal year. So we've had it.
All right, thank you. And then the Curriculum and People's Services Committee met immediately, immediately after the special board meeting and the Finance Facility Committee meeting last Thursday. There were two items on the agenda, diversity and inclusion goal update, and the high schools targeted school improvement to support Keystone Goals for students with IEPs. Both committee meetings are recorded and available for viewing if you want to get all of the details that were discussed that evening. The Policy Committee is the next agenda item?
Yes, and so the committees have been busy over the last two weeks. We also had a Policy Committee meeting, and it was a full one, very interesting. First, we First, we discussed a proposed new policy, 815 except, with AR, except for use of internet computers and network resources. And the 815 AR would be about AI. And so here we discussed AI primarily and how the district's goal would not be to prohibit AI here, but we, as Mr. Anderson was saying, we want to create guardrails for AI for our teachers first and then for students. And so the policy, the AR, would be, would help the district sort of aim towards that. And the first thing would be to create a committee, the AI committee that Mr. Anderson just talked about. Next, we talked about policy 607, tuition income. That was the second time that we reviewed that policy in the committee. So we made several different revisions to it, but the committee felt that all of them could be made before the first reading. So both policy 815 and 815 AR, as well as policy 607, will be coming to the board for a first reading within our next couple of meetings. Next discussed was policy 609, which is for investments. And this one has had some legal changes since the policy was adopted in 2010. And so a lot of that, that policy comes from code, but would be helpful for our district in having a policy that aligns with the current legal framework there. Again, will be moved to a first reading at a future meeting. Policy 610 for procurement and the AR is an interesting one. It consolidates four different policies into one. So it consolidates 610, purchases subject to bid quotation, 611, purchases budgeted, 612, purchases not budgeted, and 613, cooperative purchasing. A lot of it is driven by the school code, the PA procurement code. So again, a nice, robust discussion on that one and review and hope, and that one will move forward for our first reading. Policy 614, payroll authorization, very minimal on that one, will be moved to a first reading. Policy 615, payroll deductions, that has additions for PSBA recommended language and the board will be, again, seeing that for a first reading. So I guess expects a lot of policy on the agenda for July and August. And finally, we discussed the repeal of 610.1 exclusive contracting. Basically, we don't receive policy updates for that anymore, it's no longer recommended, it's not a policy, or it's not a practice of the district. So we haven't engaged in that type of behavior in a, in a long time. And in fact, if we did, it would be very complicated. So right now, that's being brought forward to suggest to repeal. So repeal is different from adoption of a policy. It would just need to become before the board and repealed at that meeting. But we wanted to not do that tonight and have instead just the board take a look at policy 610.1 exclusive contracting and hopefully move that forward in July to be repealed.
All right.
And that's everything. A two-hour meeting in one minute.
And, and then for the Board President's report, I just wanted to thank the board for a lot of meetings here at the end of June. And two things, just to highlight, one was to thank the staff of the Fortian who regularly distributes the print copies of the newspaper to the staff, to the, the board. What a great piece of journalism and literature. And it was really nice to see their final edition of the year and a lot of success. And look forward to keep getting that info on, on what's going on at the high school. The other thing that I realized with my report last time when I spoke about graduation, I was remiss in not highlighting the student speaker and I'm going to be forgetting her name, Katie, do you remember her last name? I'm looking, Katie Watkins, thank you. Did a wonderful job as the selected student speaker and wanted to highlight her. She, she gave a poignant and strong remarks that were inspirational, gave some good guidance for the, for the students reflective. And knowing her audience, she also made reference to some John Hughes films that the parent cohort all appreciated. So a job well done, another special part of graduation that I didn't want to neglect. So thank you for that. Next section of our agenda is for finance and facilities items. And item A is the bill list. I will welcome a motion to approve dispersments for payment totaling $1,412,553.36.
McKay moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill list is approved. Item B is Athletic Trainer Service Agreement Renewal. I will accept a motion to approve the Athletic Trainer Agreement with Premier Orthopedic and Sports Medicine Associates, LTD, to perform services in connection with the district's athletic program for the 2025, '26, I think that should be, school year? Or is that 2020?
Oh.
2024 to 2025 school year at a cost of $80,821.
Schwartz moved?
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. And again, I'll just confirm that the motion is the 2024 to 2025 school year at a cost of $80,821. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
This was, was brought up at the Finance Facility meeting and discussed earlier.
Yep, it was discussed earlier. And if anyone has student athletes who know how the trainers are available and support our student athletes and, and help them stay healthy and prepared to compete? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item C is a solar array for Chatham Park Elementary Project. This is a lengthy motion. I will accept a motion to award alternate EC-2B for a 185-kilowatt solar array to Borough Developers, Inc. of King of Prussia, Pennsylvania in the amount of $475,000, as well as authorization to process a change order of not to exceed $120,000 to upgrade the main electrical panel that is required as part of accepting the solar array alternate and to award alternate GC10 a 30-year roof warranty to Tester Construction Group, LLC in the amount of $64,000 for Chatham Park Elementary School construction.
Schwartz moved?
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I think one thing that's important to note is that, given the construction of Chatham Park, this is not something that can be installed until next year, correct?
Yep.
I have a couple of questions and please forgive my ignorance. I've done a deep, I've learned more about solar in the past couple of days than I ever really honestly wanted to. So my questions might be a little off, but I just want to make sure I understand what I'm, what I was looking at and what the numbers I saw. So the, you said the 407,000, the larger array was 639,000, but there's the rebate, which brings it down. But I came, the number, I also was thinking, I think President Wedeman mentioned, it's a payback of 23 years, is that correct, Mr. Testa?
That is correct.
And what is the warranty on the, on the solar panels? I see that, like, we have a, there's a tear down at year 40, but what's the warranty?
I, I don't know, I can find that out. But I know that we have an extended warranty on the roof to support those panels, but I'm not sure what the warranty is on the panels themselves.
Which is good, because I had a question about the roof, because I was reading it, like, if the roof needed something done, then that adds to the cost if you had good solar panels. So that's good to know about the roof. But I was talking more the warranty of the actual solar panels, not our, our roof. Because the stuff I was reading, so is maintenance part of the, included in the chart, in the, in the 639,000, is that included in that cost?
Yes. So that's in year 21, you'll see there's a spike in expenditures.
So that's included in, okay.
There's an annual cost of $5,000. And then a year 21, three or something.
There's an inverter that's replaced in that year.
Okay, all right, so we don't know the warranty on the actual solar panels. Okay. And I think Ms. Snogras did ask a question that I had wrote to, to President Wedeman earlier in the week about, you know, the taxpayer implications. And it was answered, I think you answered the first part, that it would be just for the public, knowing it's part of, it would be cash reserve, that we'd be using cash reserves that we would typically use for capital projects. But I had the same thought that I think Snogras had, that it was said to me in an email that it will change the, like, will we be changing the priority of capital projects in 2025 and going forward? But we don't have set pri, I mean, I know we have, like, the concrete, I know is a big thing, but there is, there's something that we're not going to be doing for our students to do? Or we're not exactly sure what that is yet?
So that would be developed, you know, after we get through these summer projects for '24, then J.R. would start looking at what the priorities would be for next year. So we wouldn't necessarily know today what, what would be pushed aside or pushed out further.
Okay, I mean, I guess my concern is this, looking at what I looked up, like, the 23-year payback, and thank you for confirming, that was troublesome to me. You know, I did see, like, if you put money in a savings account and get the 5% interest and, and I know that some board members are very passionate about that and I get that, but I don't, I don't see this being fiscally responsible for the district. I'm going to get a lot of flack for that, I'm not saying it's not a good thing. But I just, I'm not seeing it. I mean, would I do something, would anyone up here do something with the 23-year payback? My answer would be no, like, that's just me, I'm not seeing it. I think, just my thoughts, but I thank you for clarifying. But I really would like to know, and I do think it's an important piece, the warranty on the actual solar panels. I think that's something that we should definitely know.
Just to point clarification on that, the 23-year payback period dealt by Crabtree, that was not including the sale of S-Rex, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because I had seen.
I beg to differ.
Excuse me.
This is the model done by Raymond James.
They do have that in their.
And column C has.
Do have it.
S-Rex of 7,000 or so a year.
And, sorry, and I, again, I'm not sure, what, what is the process for getting S-Rex? Like, what is that? What does that look like? That's, that's, we go out and we sell them, we sell the rights to them? What, can, something, can that be explained?
If we were to produce that much, that would be beyond our needs, then you would have that.
Oh, okay. So more, because, because this looked like the, because the question I asked last time was how much it would generate in, in electricity? And it looks like it would be 40% of the building's energy would be by this larger array? So the S-Rex, then, how does that come into play if we're not generating off our own building?
I can find that out.
Well, I can, and so I know, I have done research on this, I can probably provide an answer for that. What, what the S-Rex are is that there are certain utilities that must be in a certain amount of renewable and solar energy in their production. And there are also certain businesses who want to say that we are going green, that we are buying green energy. So S-Rex are essentially a credit that you can put on the market for businesses, for utilities to purchase that. So they can then say, they can claim, they can claim your, you know, they, they, they put in money to pay, to pay you to claim your green energy, I guess. So, so we could, economically speaking, if we produce, whatever it is, I'll use a round number because I like to use round numbers, 500,000, you know, 500 kilowatts of electricity, we could then sell all that for, you know, to whatever the market rate is. And the rate, the rate fluctuates throughout the year, it's usually, it goes up for the most part. It's been going up for the past, like, you know, five, six years now. But you can then sell part of that, all of that. You can do that through a market, you can do that through, really, any, you know, you can do that through, through, through market, through a lot of different means. I know I have solar in my house, I actually sell it through the, like, a group that installed it. And then you, you, you get a check basically each year.
So are those exclusive rights? So if we sold them to someone because they wanted to say that they're green, does that mean we can't say we're green?
A little bit, that's a bit of a gray area, I think. We can still say we have solar, we generate solar. We can't claim, however, tho, those S-Rex. It's, it's a bit of a balancing act there.
Like an illegal? Yeah, sounds like a.
It's some kind of a, yeah, it's something like that. I mean, look, bottom line, if you put solar panels on, you're going to see them on a roof. And I also just wanted to point out, over the life of solar panels, payback period being what it is, I've seen, I mean, we did announce this years ago, a number of different scenarios. They, they do pay back. Overall, I remember looking at these and I remember that the, prior to the IRA, prior to this 30% reduction in cost, every model we looked at, whether it was a lease-to-buy, whether it's a lease, whether it was a purchase outright, we found it to be pretty much revenue neutral in just about every case. Revenue neutral or possibly a slight revenue bonus for us. Then the IRA came along. That decreased our out-of-pocket, or it, it gives a rebate of 30, of at least 30%. And that really was a bit of a game changer because that kind of, we were going back and forth between what we, you know, what we were thinking about doing, buying, leasing, whatever. This really kind of salted away the idea that a purchase would be, if not revenue neutral, slight, a slight revenue benefit over time. Yes, there'll be some upfront costs. But economically speaking, especially with this grant in place. Grant, I guess, last, the IRA grant lasted another couple of years. I'm not sure how many years it was first authorized for. But at this point, I mean, if we were at a, if we're a revenue neutral, if we're a revenue neutral standpoint with purchasing them before this, chop 40, you know, 30, 40% off the cost, I think that we're revenue positive. Not a huge windfall, but certainly, I think economically, responsible over time.
I guess my concern is that there are just a lot of assumptions that go into the model. And one of the, of the aspects that I'm not seeing with it is that opportunity cost. So I'm looking at it, I, I remember when we first started talking about solar, like, it was going to be no upfront costs. And then I think it was like a six or 10-year return. And now we're looking at 23 years. And that just seems incredibly long time for everything to go right and everything to go, you know, follow all of the assumptions. So looking at this as, you know, if, if we want to have as a board, as a district, a goal of, of more sustainability, which I think we do, is this the right avenue for us? You know, I, I also really like the idea of solar panels. I think, you know, everyone up here knows I love all Disney World and I love going past and seeing, like, the fields and fields and fields of, of solar panels that they have there. But I just wonder if, if our district and the limited space that we have and the limited energy that we can create from it is the right place for that? And if there aren't other ways that we can either look at our buildings to become more sustainable? Or look at, you know, I know it, one question we got was, you know, are there other ways for the district to, to be able to purchase renewable energy? And, and that cost was significantly lower. And so my question is just, is this the right way to meet our, I think, very good goal?
So I think I stated this at the last, the last time we, we discussed this, there is a hierarchy when it comes to renewable energy. And it's very similar to recycling. Recycling, it's reduce, reuse, recycle, that's not an easy, neither word thing, that is a hierarchy. The first thing you want to do is reuse or reduce or refuse. The second level, if you can't reduce or refuse, you, I'm sorry, if you can't, yeah, reduce or refuse, you then reuse to avoid purchasing more. If you can't do either of those, you recycle. It's very similar with, with energy. It's just not a, a snappy of a, of a use of alliteration. But the lowest rung is you, you know, kind of purchase, you, you test kind of a carbon, you know, purchasing situation. Second one is to, you know, the second, that's the lowest on hierarchy. Second one is to purchase green energy from a market, that's second. Third one is produce your own.
I guess, I guess my, my issue with that is that I just don't know, again, like, we are a school district and if, if we should be the one tasked with the highest, you know, accepting your hierarchy there, like, if we should be the one tasked with the, the highest level of that? And I think that that's also not taken into account. If we did do something like purchase that renewable energy that would create, that would make the district 100% renewable, that does go into the market, those, the market does take that into consideration. And the more, you know, districts that do that, businesses that do that, et cetera, that becomes something that then the industry understands they need to make more of. And so I think we, we've seen that over time. You know, even with, like, hybrid cars and electric cars and, and the more people that want them, the more it's, it's done, so.
We still do that, we still do that with the, with the S-Rex, by the way. We still put that green energy out there on the market. And the other thing is, if we don't do it, what's the other option? You have a black roof up there. I mean, the bottom line is here, that, we, and we raise deficiencies. I mean, the bottom line is here, that, we, and we raise deficiency, we, we, you know, have, we, we try to make things more efficient, use less energy, but the bottom line is, this cannot hurt us. It is, it is, it is environmentally beneficial and economically beneficial. And part of the, why is it economically beneficial is because we have that 30% reduction. That's not going to be here forever. We have a window, and we have to take advantage of it.
I'm going to, yeah, invite other board members to jump in.
Yeah, I, I would just like to jump in and just point out, we do a lot of things with construction in the district where we don't ask the question of how will this pay us back? We do it as like this is an investment. So when we're building a new sidewalk, the question isn't, oh, are we choosing this in a way that it's going to pay us back? No, we're doing it for safety, we're doing it for construction, to allow for a better movement, like, all, there's all these reasons. And I think it is, in my, for me, in my own opinion, as I approach different kinds of environmental sustainability, the idea of being paid back 100% for what I'm investing in financially is losing the whole purpose of this. We're investing in the future of environmental sustainability. And I, like, for me, that's a false rationale of how we should be approaching this. We're investing in the future, we're investing in producing environmentally sustainable things. Yes, this will, this will help us with 40% of the building's energy, and there's other things that we can do, like buying into the systems. However, I, I think this is such an important first step in getting us towards this, this is one set of solar panels on one building. We've done the research, we know that the panels will be able to be exposed to the sun at the amount of time, like, on my own personal house, I can't put solar panels because there's too many trees, right? Like, there's lots of things you have to consider, but this particular roof in this particular place will benefit us, but for me, it's not a question of will we be paid 100% back, because this is an investment. We didn't have the same conversation when we bought our new buses. It's a, like, there's an investment level in the future that has to be part of this conversation and not only the 100% payback concept.
So I just, I mean, I'm going to respectfully disagree with what you're, you're saying. I mean, we get buses, we need buses to transport children to school, sidewalks, we obviously don't want children to trip over a cracked sidewalk, and I'm not saying it's not important, I, I, I do believe it's important, but I don't think Ms. Snogras is much more eloquent than I am, and I think, again, I'm going to reference what she said, she kind of sums up much more eloquently than I ever could what I was thinking tonight. I don't think it's, you know, that's not the primary mission, I think, of our school board, and I think, which is to uphold academic standards for our students and to be fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. I'm also, I have a question, I'm also very troubled about doing something without knowing the warranty, that seems not smart at all. I mean, when I do a big house project, we buy something, we know warranties, and I think everyone would agree to that. But in the presentation, I had a question much earlier, and I forget the woman's name, she mentioned something about at year 15, a big expensive part, and she didn't say what the part is, I have part question mark, do we, is that included in?
I would say yes, in year 21, there is an additional $50,000 cost that is under the operations and maintenance.
She said year 15?
She said 15, but I think in the model that we have, it's in year 21.
In year 21, so that is in the-
That's incorporated in the overall 40-year cash flow.
Yeah, it just, I, I just, yeah, I, I, the warranty is a, is a big sticking point for me, but I just don't, I don't see that as our mission, and as Ms. Snogras said, 23 years is a lot of time to play out, so, thank you.
I will say that it is not, we try to avoid a practice with the board presentations to get kind of new information on a night that we're being asked to vote, but given that this is summer and we have more limited meetings, we're trying to get that information and be able to have this productive conversation and, and then hold the vote tonight. I will say that, you know, as, as somebody who, part of my job is to finance energy efficiency projects in community facilities, I also am struggling to see how this adds up as not even the best, but even just the most, like, efficient or cost-effective way to position the district to reach our environmental goals and trying to hold that we are stewards both of our environmental impact and, and then the tax dollars raised for our community schools. I was struck by last week's finance and facility meeting when we were talking about the sustainability resolution and the, it has a drafted goal of 100% renewable energy by 2035, and I called it a moonshot, it seemed like an audacious goal, and then asked, well, how much would it cost for the district to purchase 100% renewable energy? And the answer is less than $40,000 a year, and I, I'm trying to reconcile that. We can, we can claim to be 100% for all seven of our buildings, the Oakmont Building, all of the district operations for less than $40,000 a year, with a operating budget over $150 million, that's 0.03%, and feel like that's within reach to, to get 100% of the district's energy supply from renewable sources, in contrast to just 40% of the energy, energy needs at just one of our elementary schools. And I think for me, what it comes down to having, we've had lots of presentations here at the board about solar, looking at webinars, and I appreciate that generating solar is an important environmental contribution, but I just think we're not well positioned to do it. We are constrained by our roofs. Some of the schools that have done it well and successfully have acres of fields to dedicate to, to their large solar arrays, and then they're generating not just enough for their district, but, you know, can sell it back to the grid, and we're not in that position. Our roofs are space constrained, we have to put in additional costs to reinforce the roof and, and add warranties, making the pro, the project less economically efficient for us. So, yeah, the question that I ask is, is it incumbent on us as a school district to host the solar when they're, when we're a more expensive way to generate solar? And for me, I'm coming down to the purchasing 100% solar power gives us more bang for the buck and allows us to use the $500,000 or so that would be from our capital reserve to projects that add efficiency, add safety, directly impact the function of our, our schools and educational program.
We're doing the efficiency stuff anyway, and generating 40% is better than generating 0%. I mean, this is a small amount of the overall cost of Chatham, and we keep talking about finances, and I, 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 I'll say it again, is 23 years a long period of payback? Yes, but it pays for itself. This is not something that is going to, in the long term, we, we, we talk each year about our, our attempt to try to keep taxes, to keep tax increases low. It's a long-term investment, but bottom line, it pays for itself, it does pay for itself. We don't have large fields, we're not going to generate a 500% of the sole of the energy that we need. This will, however, this will save us money over time. We will save money on, on energy costs, whether or not we purchase green or not, even if we purchase green, we're still not, we're still not taking advantage of our, you know, of, of our real estate. Yes, we have small roofs, yes, they are space constrained, they can handle solar, we had an entire presentation from Crabtree about how much solar could be included in each roof. This is, I mean, we, we even, students have asked for this, parents have asked for this, this is, this is an investment, and if we, if we want to say that we are developing contemporary citizens for the future, this is going to be a part of their future, whether we like to admit it or not, we've all been outside in the past couple of weeks, the temperatures are, are in the 90s, that is going to become the norm because of climate change. Whether or not this is the most, you know, economically efficient way to claim that we have 100% efficiency, this is a way for artists to become more sustainable. We have a policy, we have a draft resolution, if we are serious about this, if we're serious about being environmentally sustainable and preparing our kids for the future and providing them the ability to have a future, this is an investment, I think, that we had, that that is financially pays for itself, and environmentally, there is no question that putting on solar panels is a much higher level. And by the way, it's also a part of educational experience for our, our students. If we want to try to set a good example, we just took that example. I mean, if we say, well, we're not going to do this because we might save a, you know, dollar or two somewhere else, even though the solar panels overall aren't going to cost us anything. I mean, overall, they are going to save us money, and, and after that payback period of, 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 you know, 23 years, after that, all the savings are savings, they are just, they are just cost avoidances. So, I mean, economically, this makes a ton of sense, environmentally, it makes even more sense. If we, the, the question is really, are we serious about sustainability, or are we giving lip service? And I don't want to give lip service, with, the, the, the problem is too acute, it is, we are experiencing, we are experiencing it, it now, I feel like, like we have to act for the benefit of, of, of our kids, we, we, we want to make them good future citizens, let's give them future. And let's do it for something that, that long-term is not going to cost us anything.
I just wanted to say, I want to thank the district for bringing the bids forward and all the bids for the Chatham Park project. And regarding solar, I mean, this has been a topic for several years for the board, and we had two proposals for Glenwood. We, we've had consultants come in at least two, two times, we've had architectural evaluations, so, you know, I think this is something that the board has thought long and hard about, the district has, you know, looked at the information, so I, I, I do agree with Dave that it, it, it's a unique project, and others have said that it's something that's going to pay for itself, you know, from the analysis, so, and, you know, I think it's good for the planet, so.
I, I am not opposed to solar power, I think it is a, a beneficial thing, I just am not sure that we, as a school district with the constraints that we have, are the best ones to supply it, to generate it, and if we can purchase it and purchase it in an amount that gets 100% renewable energy for all of the district's energy uses versus making this investment that won't pay back until 2047, the kids that graduate that year won't be born for five more years, right? Like, is, that's a long time horizon, but the, that there is solar energy available, and we can purchase it more economically effectively, I think, through purchasing than, than generating it ourselves.
We have one chance to put this on, on our buildings, though, the chance of being built it, we have, we have an opportunity, it's in front of us, it is there, it pays for itself, I just, I don't understand the reluctance of some, of, of some board members here to do something that is economically beneficial and environmentally beneficial when we're, I mean, we had a presentation this evening about, you know, students who, who are doing environmentally sound things, taking on themselves, and now we're saying that they're doing it, great, love it, we think that's fantastic, we're not going to do it. And, and I mean, that to me is just, it's, it's just, it's, if we, what's the point of having a policy, what's the point of having a resolution, what's the point of doing all this stuff if we're not going to protect what we preach?
I'm, I'm just-
This is not, I, I know we can buy it, it is not the same thing as generating it ourselves, it just isn't.
I think that's the question then, before the board, is there any other debate or discussion?
Can we vote?
I would like to call the vote. So the motion is, and I'm not going to read it all again because it was quite long, but the motion is for the solar array for Chatham Park Elementary Project, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Nay. All right, let's show hands, all in favor. That's four, opposed, four. I'm going to go to the panel.
President, wait a minute, so, per Board Policy 006, under the voting subsection, it states all motions shall require for adoption a majority vote of those school directors present and voting, except as provided by statute or these procedures. So in this instance, in order for this item to pass, it would have to be five in favor of. And because there's only four, the motion does not carry.
The motion does not pass.
Can we, can we, can we re, can we reintroduce this motion for next meeting?
Sorry, Mr. Schloss.
What's that? Can we reintroduce this motion at a future meeting?
He's working on his microphone.
So, I apologize. No, at this point, the, the motion was denied, and then it's not going to be brought forth again.
Not forth again tonight, or at any future meeting?
At, at this point, well, it's, it's not, it's not carrying tonight. If, I mean, I guess it, it could be brought up at a future meeting if it's placed on the agenda, but typical, typical practice, if, if the motion doesn't carry as it's brought before the board and has been voted on by, by the board, then it's not brought back again.
All right, thank you, we will-
I would be happy to future agenda meeting.
We will add it to, we will consider it for other business meetings and Finance and Facility Committee meetings. Thank you. Item six is human resources, item A is retirements and resignations, I will accept a motion to accept the following retirement and resignation as listed.
Vitaly moved.
Snogras second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is appointments, I will accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act 168 of 2014.
Larson moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will pause with our welcoming of a new administrator.
And Ms. Butler, our, Ms. Butler, our Assistant HR Director.
Good evening, good to see everyone again. Nicole, if you can come on up.
And if you want to bring your cute little-
Yes.
You're welcome.
We can see the dedication of Nicole to come out tonight.
You don't have to.
She just had a baby last week.
Oh goodness, brand-new baby is joining us.
Yes.
So much to congratulate you for then.
How is that possible? Well, I'll just start while Nicole comes on up. Nicole, she has her bachelor's degree from West Chester University, a master's from Penn State University, and she's currently in the doctoral program, program at St. Joe's University. She started in education in 2015, she's been with Haverford Township since 2020. During this time, she's been of the, part of the, a part, I'm sorry, I can't speak today, a part of the aspiring administrators, she's helped with the special ed plan, and if you don't remember her, she's most recently presented for the ELA curriculum audit, so, congratulations, multiple congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome, and she's the new supervisor of special programs.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations, it's nice to hear the success story of your growth in the district, and lovely to see the little baby.
Yeah. Oh my gosh, but thank you.
Are we going up?
Yeah.
Having the littlest visitor we've ever had.
I think the way this whole time you just had babies. Yeah, I'm just so. Yeah, like, like, really, really new. I'm like, of course, you can get that baby. Congratulations.
Hi.
Gorgeous, congratulations. Sorry. All right. That was a fun celebration, okay. Item, I just want to make sure I'm on the right place. Item C is miscellaneous rates, I will accept a motion to approve the miscellaneous salary and hourly rates for the 2024-25 school year.
Larson moved.
Lee second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven is pupil services, item A is educational service agreements, I will accept a motion to approve the following educational service agreements for district students. The agreements cover reimbursement for privately obtained legitimate educational services as incurred by the family for the benefit of the student.
Snogras moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven is pupil services, item A is educational service agreements, I will accept a motion to approve the following educational service agreements for district students. The agreements cover reimbursement for privately obtained legitimate educational services as incurred by the family for the benefit of the student.
Snogras moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Motion passes. Item B is Out-of-District 2024-25 Service Contracts. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational agreements for services provided to students attending out-of-district placements as listed, including ESY, Extended School Year.
Larson moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is Out-of-District 24-25 ESY Contracts. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational contracts for students attending out-of-district placements for 2024 Extended School Year Programs.
Shelton moved.
Snodgrass second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Item D is Educational Services Contracts. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational contracts for services provided to district students for the, and it says 23-24?
That is correct.
Okay, 2023 to 2024 school year.
Larson moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're up to the Policy Section 9 of our agenda. Item A is Policy 712. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 712 Environmental Sustainability.
Shelton moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
What's the point if we're not going to be doing what we should do?
That comment, that comment notwithstanding, this policy went through the Policy Committee for, I think, several drafts. And there were very minimal revisions between the last board meeting, so it's been read now twice by the board, and now it is up for adoption. And I think it was just, there were some, like, typo errors that were fixed, and I reviewed them, and it looks like they were fixed in this version.
Any other comments or discussion? This is a vote to adopt Policy 712. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Policy 626. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 626 Federal Fiscal Compliance.
Snodgrass. Larson second.
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'll just note for this one, I know it's late, so I'll just note for this one and all of the other ones, that there were, I believe there were not any revisions to these. Again, they've all been, gone through the Policy Committee, and they have been up for two readings, and now they are up for adoption, so.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Policy 605. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 605 Tax Levy.
Snodgrass moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is Policy 606. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 606 Tax Collection.
Larson moved.
Snodgrass second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Policy 608. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 608 Bank Accounts.
Shelton moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy adopted. Item F is Policy 621. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 621 Local Taxpayer Bill of Rights.
Snodgrass moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Policy 622. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 622 Capital Assets and Gatsby Statement 34.
Larson moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Policies are adopted. Onto item 10, Other Items. Item A is PSBA 2024 Legislative Platform for Safety Reforms. I will accept a motion to approve supporting the PSBA 2024 Legislative Platform Proposal for Safety Reforms as discussed at the June 13, 2024 Regular Board Meeting.
Larson moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I want to thank Mr. Schwartz for providing additional information. I had asked at our last discussion of this, how many suicides in the state are caused by firearms? And the data that was provided from the Pennsylvania Department of Health shows that firearms are the greatest cause of suicide death, or the leading cause of suicide death, deaths in the state. So, that for me made it very clear that there's a direct connection here to that data and what we're, we are proposing to PSBA.
That the information was sobering, that linkage between access to firearms and those who have mental illness and are considering suicide.
Related to this as well, sorry, Ms. Butler.
No, I'm sorry.
Just to finish that thought, I had asked a while back during a Policy Committee meeting that, I know the CNN last year had brought some updates to the Suicide Awareness Policy, I believe it's 819, Suicide Awareness Prevention and Response. And there are, I would like, I know we're going through an audit very methodically, looking at the different numbers, and this is in the 800 section, but just if this is something that we want to really get behind and look at suicide prevention seriously, I'd like for us to also consider in the Policy Committee, looking at those revision, suggested revisions to 819. That's all.
Thank you.
This probably, this isn't going to be a popular comment, but I feel like over the past three months, we're, I'm having a hard time keeping track. We're doing a lot of proposals and resolutions. We had, like, three meetings, we discussed a proposal or resolution against Governor Shapiro's voucher program. We had talk about a sustainability proposal last week. This is the second time this one came up. And my problem with this is, is twofold, and it has nothing to do with the content of this. I am a big gun control advocate. That's not where this is coming from. I just think these resolutions are honestly a waste of the board's time. It's kind of, to me, they're, they're not what we're here to be doing. It's kind of a way to make yourself feel good, but it doesn't really do anything. I know people will argue with that, but, and I know you can say, oh, well, you know, these have an impact on sustainability, on the environment for our children's future and gun control, student shootings, but you can really tie that to anything. We could do a resolution on fracking, or poverty, or hunger, and tie it to our stu, to the future and students. But it, to me, it kind of highlights, and I wrote this down, the insanity of not discussing real educational issues. Like, if we were going to do a resolution on calling for change in our students' use of technology, I'll be all for that. If we want to do a resolution calling out the administration for decreasing test scores or dropping student ranking, I'm all for it. I'll help write it. I'll sit with people. But I, I get there's no harm if people want to do it on their own time, but it, to me, it's just, if we're not making resolutions that deal with true issues in our district, I feel, it's just something that I, it just unsettles me, and it seems that we're spending a lot more time, just in those examples. That was one, two, three, four, five, this is six meetings that we've spent time on, resolutions that I think they, they show more focus on people's agendas rather than the educational, what we should be focusing on is education. And again, this is coming from someone who is a huge gun control activist, like, like one of my most important, if not my most important voting issue. Just my thoughts, not-
Just one point, this is not a resolution-
I will ask Mr. Schwartz to clarify. This is a resolution for a specific purpose to the PSBA policy platform, a legislative platform?
Yeah, what this is, is each year, PSBA releases a list, or a legislative priorities platform to lawmakers. One, in, in the past, one of the focuses of that has been on fair funding. As we've seen, there's been movement on that this year. This is not a resolution just that we're doing for fun. We are submitting something officially to, if it's a basis, we're submitting something officially to PSBA to include in, in their platform as part of their lobbying efforts to lawmakers. They will then, if this is adopted by PSBA, they will then bring this to lawmakers and say, "Pennsylvania School Board Association supports safe storage of firearms." That's what this is about. They, this will be a legitimate part. It's not just something that we're passing and it's going to sit there on an eye shelf. This is something that we are passing in order to encourage, in a very direct way, all lawmakers, not just our, not just people who are, all lawmakers as part, you know, from PSBA, to encourage all lawmakers to adopt this. And there are, I believe, two bills out there right now with regards to safe stores that were brought up. One of them was brought up by our own Amanda Capelletti. These are the kinds of things that you, if we want to affect change on statewide level, these are the things that we do. We get our organizations, our lobbying arms to ask lawmakers to do these things. So, it is not a resolution just to feel good and to do whatever. It's something that if we pass it, we will submit it officially to PSBA. If they do not include it on, on their platform initially, we can go out to their delegate assembly, which is held in the fall of each year, and reintroduce it. But it's a, I want to point out, it's a very tangible thing. It's not a, it's not just a resolution. It is a statement of our board to PSBA to try to get them to adopt something.
And, and I apologize that I didn't make the difference between the PSBA resolution and other resolutions that we passed. That is my fault, and I should have, I did not make that clear in my statement. I do apologize. But nonetheless, I feel like it, when you get into advocating in politics, that unsettles me being on a school board, which I think should be a political.
And what, the other reason why we are doing this, and I, I discussions with members, school board members from other districts and so forth, the amount of money that we spend on securing schools and the amount of money that we spend on social, emotional wellbeing, this plays directly into that. You know, one thing that I found in research that I thought was very telling is that when we look at just student survival, I mean, all, all suicide attempts, if you break them out, grand total of 4% of them result in fatality. When firearms are involved, 90% result in fatality. So, if we're talking about, if we're talking about keeping our students alive and giving them a second chance, I think this is a very, very, very relevant to school operations. And safe firearms, I mean, you know, we've seen school shootings happen, you know, all over the country over the past couple, over the past many years. And we have spent millions of dollars to harden our schools. I mean, after Uvalde, I believe, some people were talking about removing glass from doors, turning our schools into bunkers. I don't want to see that happen. And so, taking steps to try to prevent future school shootings by doing something as simple, I mean, if you're going to have a firearm, it's, it seems that you want to do it, you want to do it safely. This is only promoting safe firearm ownership. So, that is, I mean, it has a direct tie to schools, and that's why, frankly, this year, in previous years, we've, we've used terms like common sense solutions. We've listed a bunch of them. This year, we, I, you know, we said, "Let's focus in on one of these that directly relates to school safety." I believe that this one does.
I appreciate that, and we'll say that this is our district's, our board's only opportunity to speak up and have an influence on what the legislative platform contains. It is by passing a resolution that is submitted to PSBA, and I will maintain that as a school board, representing the interests of Havreford Township, that this board's advocacy of a range of topics that concern public education is part of our charge as, as members of this board and elected representatives to advocate for the interests of our district and students and, and funding and safety and, and other things. With that, I will call the vote for our support for submitting this legislative platform proposal for safety reforms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 11 of our-
Wait a minute, just, just a quick point, just a quick question here, I guess. Would, will this, this be submitted to PSBA tomorrow? Will that be done by the board, or will it just be done by a board member?
I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Testa's board secretary, or Trish would be able to coordinate the submission of this to PSBA.
And tomorrow's the last day, so it absolutely has to be done, has to go out tomorrow. So, that's just one thing I wanted to point out. If we wait, if we wait another day, it's not going to, it's not going to make it. So, we do need to go out tomorrow. If you need any-
There's an online form. I can make sure you have a link, yeah, to submit it.
If you need, and, and do you, I mean, do you, I mean, I just, I'm not going to be too, not to bolster here, but do you have access to, to that form?
We'll discuss that after the meeting. Thank you. Item 11 is for public comments on other items, and we had one person sign up. Mr. Dario Messia, Messia, I'm sorry if I-
Everybody.
And I do not have my spiel, but I will remind you to state your name and confirm your residency, and that this is your opportunity to address the board and, and model good civic engagement. And you'll have three minutes. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound, and you'll be asked to conclude your remarks. And you are being recorded and broadcast as part of our meeting, and your name and topic of your comments will be in our meeting minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. My name's Dario Messia. I'm resident, my kids go to Chatham Park Elementary. What else did I need to say?
Just you're a resident of the township.
Okay, resident of the township. Thanks for letting me speak today. I normally talk off the cuff, but I only have three minutes, so I'm going to read. I'm here today speaking for my family. We have two daughters going to Chatham Park. One's in third, one will be in third grade, the other will be in fifth. But I'm also speaking for over 400 people who've signed a petition so far we put together. And we're here to, well, I mean, we're urging you to consider removing smartphones from every school in the district, from kindergarten through high school. They're super addictive. Most adults have trouble disconnecting, so kids' brains aren't even fully formed yet, so you can imagine how hard it is for them to disconnect. And they're just such a distraction. They discourage face-to-face contact with their peers. They undermine students' trust in the school, because they're always going to their parents when they have problems instead of going to school administrators. And studies are just overwhelmingly showing how harmful they are to kids. Between the nonstop notifications and the allure of social media, how can we expect our kids to be able to focus in the classroom? It's not fair to them, but it's also not fair to the teachers who are trying to teach them. And the data backs this up. Research shows that even the mere presence of a smartphone can reduce cognitive capacity, hindering students' abilities to absorb and retain information. They also contribute to a growing issue of cyberbullying. Social media platforms by design are breeding grounds for negative interactions. Students are often subjected to cyberbullying, which leads to emotional distress, depression, and in some cases, suicide. The data backs this up as well. Multiple studies have linked smartphone usage in kids to increased anxiety, depression, even ADHD, and higher rates of suicide. By removing them from the school, we can create a safer and more inclusive space where students can focus on building positive face-to-face relationships. A recent study by Common Sense Media found that the average team spends eight hours and 39 minutes each day using electronic media. Imagine the stress that causes their young minds. Wouldn't it be great if school could be a break from that? A place for them to disconnect from all of that and focus on learning and building friendships in the real world? A lot of schools are already doing this across the world. In our region alone, the Philadelphia School District just did it, and a bunch of private schools have been doing it, and they've all seen positive results. Between those and the growing amounts of data showing how harmful they are to kids, the writing's on the wall that more and more schools will be following suit. So, the question that I would like to ask is, do we want our district to be leaders in this movement or followers in this movement? Because it's going to happen. I would urge you to prioritize our kids, health and safety, and have us be leaders in this movement. Thank you.
Yeah. Are, were you going to submit the petition?
I have the list, yeah.
You could give it to Mr. Testa. Thank you.
I'm going to send it in an email, too, because it's only been up for two weeks, and we have over four. So, I'm going to leave it rolling and evolve.
Okay. Thank you.